Good evening, everyone. I call a meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion in a second that the agenda of June 12th, 2018, be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Um, all right. May I have a motion in a second? Oh my goodness, we're having an issue here. A motion in a second that the board approve the following consent agenda with acceptance of recommendations from the superintendent for personnel changes with addendum to be included in that motion. So moved. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. We have the treasurer's report for the month ending April 30th, 2018. May I have a motion in a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending April 30th, 2018, be approved? So moved. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, we have our special reports?
We do have our special reports, so... Anybody got a clicker to get me to the next slide? Thank you, that was great. It's tough to read, but I just want to go over our special reports this evening. We're going to start with Mr. Jim Pfeifer, Assistant Superintendent, and Brian McKay from Family First Federal Credit Union to recognize student artwork that, if you saw as you came in, it's a great partnership we have with Family First Credit Union and our incredible student artists. And then we're also going to take some time to recognize our tenure candidates and staff benchmarks for our staff that have been here a number of years and doing incredible work with our students. And then we're going to take some time to recognize a certain board member by the name of Carol Nasra, who is retiring from the board after this meeting. And then we'll take a moment, too, to welcome our new board member, who was recently elected, Mr. Jaeger. And finally, we'll say thank you in a little presentation around Claire, our student rep for the board for the last two years as she heads off to California to become really smart and then come back and give Penfield High School a great donation. So, we will do all of that in our special report, so I'll turn it over now to Mr. Pfeifer.
Thank you, Dr. Button. It's my honor and pleasure every year to introduce some of our student artists and showcase the outstanding talents that our students have here at Penfield High School as part of the Arts in Education Program. The Arts in Education Program is a program that's run through our local BOSIs that offers school districts the opportunity to enhance the educational experiences of all students. We do this through field trips, through guest presenters, guest speakers, guest performers, and then also through specific experiences regarding the arts as they stand, whether it's visual arts or performing arts. Part of this process, we have a partnership with Family First Federal Credit Union. And it's been a great 11-year partnership wherein Family First generously donates funds to have student artwork that's been selected for permanent display here in our schools, framed, and then it's with us here in our schools after it's displayed for a year at Family First, and then it goes back to the school in which the student is attending when they create the artwork, and then eventually returned to the student when they graduate. It's an outstanding program and an honor. We're very lucky to have many of our student artists and their families here with us this evening. We look forward to showcasing their artwork, and I'm going to do a pre-announcement that when we're done, when we take a break, if the students and their families could meet Mrs. Bradstreet out in the hallway for another photo opportunity, we'd appreciate it. And then also, just a quick announcement for those folks that are here. In September, we'll have another reception at Family First Federal Credit Union for the student artists and their families so that they can see their work actually publicly on display at that time and where it will be for the next year, and they can bring family around then at that time to see their work and celebrate as well. So, in advance, congratulations to all of our student artists, and thank you for sharing your talents with us here in Penfield. So, without further ado, if we can advance the slides, we'll introduce the students and their teachers, who will be sharing a little bit of information about the work. Students, if we could ask you to stand up when you hear your name is called, that's great. We're going to start with Samantha Lott from Scribner Elementary School. And I think Mr. Herschler is going to tell us a little bit about Samantha's work.
Where's Sammy? Sammy here?
Yeah, she's here.
Come on over. You amazing artist, you. Great job. This is Sammy Lott. And I'm going to tell you a few things about Sammy and then read a few things about her amazing art expertise. So Sammy's favorite color is blue, and she likes to eat mint chocolate chip ice cream. Me, too. Her favorite things to do at school are reading and doing the monkey bars, because she just learned how. Her family includes a younger sister Natalie and a pet hamster named...
Cherry.
Cherry. Her amazing artwork is part of the emotional portrait project done by first grade. Students explored emotion and how to draw them according to facial expression. Color was discussed, and students thought about how color made them feel. They looked at Picasso in his Blue Period, as well as a group of artists named "The Phoavs" who used color more expressively. Sammy chose the word "content," as you can see, and felt the color yellow conveyed her emotion. Please give a hand to this awesome artist, Sammy.
Next, from Cobles Elementary School, Adelaide Puccia, and her work will be shared with us by Mrs. Vatican.
Hi, my name is Susan Vatican, and I'm actually Adelaide's art teacher. This is Adelaide Puccia, and she's a third grader at Cobles. This is our classroom teacher, Ms. Brown, and our principal, Dr. Kenny. And we're here to introduce Adelaide's artwork. Adelaide named her artwork "Be Colorful." And for this artwork, Adelaide was learning about symmetry and asymmetry. They also learned about Pablo Picasso and his Cubist period. And they went to a website called Picasso Head, and they created a digital portrait. And then she used that digital portrait to inspire her work. Adelaide's portrait shows a lot of personality. The asymmetry of the winking eye and the earring that's curved on one side really add to the quirkiness of the character. She also did a great job choosing colors that unify the piece. Besides Adelaide receiving the special recognition tonight, it is also her birthday.
Birthday!
So she chose to sneak away and spend a little time with you on her birthday. Thank you very much.
Next, from Harris Hill, we have William Summers. And I believe his classroom teacher, Mrs. Boncheck, will be introducing William and his artwork.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jamie Boncheck. I'm Will's classroom teacher, and we're here with our principal, Mr. Mark Nelson. So Will, we're so proud of you to start out. Just to share a little bit about Will, he's such a creative and dedicated young man. He takes his work at school very seriously, and he's curious about each subject that he learns. Writing is a real strength of Will's, and he's loving our most recent writing, which is poetry, and he will write about any topic with poetry. He has a variety of interests in drawing and in art. He also has a strong passion for football, flag football, and basketball. His reading is growing tremendously, and I've had the great opportunity to work with him from first grade to second grade. We looped up together. So I've really been able to see him grow, and it's been amazing, Will. His favorite series is "The Magic Treehouse" now. So, most importantly, I think that Will has such a big heart and is so caring. He's always the first friend to jump to help solve a problem in our classroom. He makes everyone proud with his continued growth. Just to tell a little bit about his artwork, he titled his piece of art "Dream Party." So, he used this as a self-portrait of himself dreaming. Creating this picture, he just used images from his imagination. He has Minecraft Steve, a ninja, a cat, a party hat dog enjoying the fun. In the background, you can see moon, stars, and cake candles, and a mirror disco ball. He used vivid colors and a layered painting technique with creativity and confidence. Will, we're so proud of you. Keep being that Will Summers that we know and love, and keep growing. Way to go, bud.
Next, from Indian Landing, Clara Bender, who will be introduced by her art teacher, Maureen Peer.
Hi, I'm Maureen Peer, Clara's art teacher. And I'm presenting here with Marcy Ware, principal. Clara is a second grader at Indian Landing Elementary School. She's in Mrs. Hickey's class. She has a twin brother and two little sisters. In school, she loves to read and is always excited to learn new things. At home, she enjoys playing outside and spending time with her family. She is very imaginative and does an excellent job in the art room, listening to directions. She uses what is being taught, as well as her own creative process, to make beautiful art pieces, such as this flower that she painted this year. She painted this flower after looking at flower paintings by the American artist Georgia O'Keeffe. We learned about how to zoom in on objects and draw what we saw, not what we thought we saw. She did an excellent job in this painting, painting values and using bright colors. She did an excellent job adding a lot of details, and we are very proud of her and all of the wonderful things she is accomplishing in school.
Next, from Bay Trail, we have Hoyt Goodwill, and I believe Mr. Garza is going to speak about his work.
Unfortunately, my artists were busy tonight, so they couldn't make it. So I'm here representing Bay Trail Art. The first piece was created in Ms. Simmons' room. It is by Hoyt Goodwill, a seventh grader at Bay Trail Middle School. Hoyt has always enjoyed creating art. He also likes to read fantasy, plays the trumpet, runs track, and cross-country. Hoyt created this no tan by cutting pieces out of a black sheet of paper, using the positive and negative spaces to create his composition. I asked Hoyt, "What inspired you to do this, this train picture?" And he said, "I did it for my brother, because my brother loves trains. I did it for my sister because she loves birds and the trees and landscapes." And with a few suggestions from my art teacher, it all came together. He said, in his words, he said, "I was inspired by nothing but everything." The next artist is Rachel Bell. She created this piece in Mrs. Hostler's class. Rachel is an eighth grader at Bay Trail. She is extremely talented. She has always been interested in drawing. She likes to draw things that she likes. Rachel loves to express herself through art and wants to show others that when she draws or creates, it's special to her. For this project, Rachel was tasked with creating a design that could be repeated to make an interesting composition. The series of complex shapes were cut out of a single piece of rubber and printed four times to create her design.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. From Penfield High School, Addison Wallace.
Okay, this piece is by Addison Wallace Addie. I know her as. She's in our studio art class. She's a ninth grader, but has an extraordinary ability to be able to see as an artist. She also has an amazing work ethic. And so that, coupled with her passion for the arts, we see a lot of beautiful work. This is just one example of it. An acrylic painting where students stretched their own canvases, primed them, and she's working with acrylic paint. They learned about color theory, composition, and also how to work emotively with color. So we're looking forward to seeing far more from Addie as the years go by. Thank you, Addie.
Thank you, Mrs. Greg. And next, from Penfield High School, we have Mara Heppard, who will be introduced by Luke Lorenzo.
Hi, I'm Luke Lorenzo. I teach art, and Mara is my student in drawing. But she did this great still life drawing with graphite where she had to record detail as accurately as possible, create the illusion of space. And this type of drawing from observation is typical of what a student would present for a college portfolio, because usually colleges and art schools are going to require drawings from observation. And Mara did a beautiful job of recording the values and the textures and the surface details in this particular group of still life items which she took out of our still life cupboard in the back of the art department. She also is an animator and a wonderful filmmaker, and she happens to be this month's principal's art award winner. And her work is on display across from the nurse's office right now. The movies are playing, and you have photography, too, right? So she's multiply talented, very hardworking, and she seems to do it all without breaking a sweat and getting really, having a lot of anxiety about it. So it's really wonderful to work with her. So, and I just would like to thank First Federal, or Federal First, Family First, excuse me, and my colleagues who bring us and give us such well-educated and well-trained students through the years. And also, a special thank you to Mrs. Nasra for being such a great supporter of our department over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzo. Could we please have another round of applause for all of our student artists? Thank you so much for sharing your talents with the district and the community, and thank you to the families for bringing them here this evening. I'd like to give Mr. Brian McKay from Family First Federal Credit Union an opportunity to stand up and wave or say a few words if you'd like to. He's there in the back, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, very much. We'd just like to say 11-year partnership has been absolutely wonderful. We look forward to continuing this partnership in the years going forward and support not only the arts in Penfield High School, but arts across our entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian is standing in this evening for our usual point of contact, Mr. Guy Taddio at Family First, who's home. His wife just had a baby, so he wasn't able to be with us today because he's home with his family. So that's great news. Again, these works of art will be put on display at Family First for about one year. We'll be transferring them over in the weeks to come after the school year ends, and we'll have a reception there in September for the students and their families again to come and see the work. And then they'll be welcome to come and see them there at any time. So thank you again, Brian, and everybody at Family First. We greatly appreciate the partnership. And finally, I'd like to thank the members of our District Arts and Education Committee, and especially Christine Schopfel, who really does the work. I joke every year, but I have the title of Arts and Education Coordinator, but Christine Schopfel gets the stipend as really the support for it. She does all the work. She coordinates the work with our reps who are in the buildings, organizing the paperwork and getting the activities set up so that these activities can take place here in the district. So thank you to all of our committee members and to Christine for all of their hard work. We greatly appreciate it. A round of applause for all of our reps, some of whom are here today. Thank you. And at this time, we're going to invite all of the student artists and their families, and I'm remembering to do it, right, Mrs. Bradstreet, to join Mrs. Bradstreet back in the hallway for another photo opportunity. So we'll take a couple minutes to let those folks filter their way out. Thank you, everybody, and congratulations to all of our student artists again.
Okay, so we're going to keep rolling here. This is our second special report, which is our tenure recognition and benchmark, years of service. And we start that with folks who've been here for 15 years. And I just wanted to say, as superintendent, incredible thank you. I've been here since 2008 in the district, so I did get a tenure recommendation. I can't wait to find out what's in one of those gifts in a few more years, when I hopefully make it to 15. But we talk a lot about Team Penfield. We can't do anything without everybody in this room. So, please know that while I might not be able to get to all your buildings and say hello on a daily basis, your work and what you do for our students in this building, in these buildings, in our district is never forgotten and always appreciated. And just also, a special thank you for members of your family and loved ones who joined you here, because I'm sure you did not tell them beforehand that the air conditioning is not working. So, once we wrap up our special presentations, I promise that I'll take a pause so you guys can all go home and get back to grading papers and doing work. You're obviously all welcome to stay to the very end of the board meeting, but we also know you probably have a lot of celebrating to do. And I'm going to turn it over now to Mrs. Gregory, and Mrs. Gregory and her office do all of the hard work when it comes to setting up this event. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Buddington, would you come on up, please? So each of your administrators will be calling your name to come up. When you come up, please accept your gift and then move right down the line and shake hands with everyone as we go along. All right, Mr. Buddington.
So we have three individuals up for tenure, receiving tenure tonight. Only two of them could be here, or one could be here. Kayla Dietrich and Chelsea Kahn could not be here tonight, so please give them a round of applause. But we do have Stephen Eccleston, our House A principal. And while Steve's shaking hands, I'm just going to continue. Benchmark, starting with 15 years of service to Penfield. Marilyn Grimsley. Wendy Klug. And we have a number of individuals who couldn't be here tonight. William Allen, Tanya Bernaducci, Tammy Carter, Jen Leaderhouse, Kim Romano, Villaphone Vagasvath, I always mispronounce her name, Michelle Zachalino, and Mary Zweifel. So please give them a round of applause. For 20 years, Paulina Brecker. And individuals who couldn't be here tonight, also with 20 years, Anthony Kerr, Joseph Kruger, Michael Assur, and Mary Ziegler. Please give them a round of applause. For 25 years, Angela Carpenter. 25 years, I'll give you a hug. Also 25 years and couldn't be here, Amy Wilson. Please give Amy a round of applause. For 30 years in Penfield, Michael Geraci. Shelley Lamanna. And Antonia Scalise. All of our 30-year people from Bay Trail made it tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have Dr. Stephen Kenny from Cobles, please.
Thank you, Barb. We are very excited to be here tonight. I'd like to say, on behalf of the Penfield School District, congratulations to our tenure recommendations, and also congratulations to our multiple individuals who have many years of experience in the district. Thank you for all that you do every day for our kids. We're going to get started with our tenure recommendations, and our first individual is Mary Ann Christman, a TA at Cobles. And we have one of our first grade teachers up for tenure this year. Congratulations to Kimberly Osgood. Onto our 15 years of service. We have many individuals that are here tonight to recognize. We're going to begin with Elizabeth Brown. Congratulations. Anne Kussner. Another 15 years. Congratulations. Jean Parsons, come on up. Sue Vatican. Congratulations. Great job. And unable to be here tonight is our school counselor, Scott Kazel. He also has 15 years of service in the district, as well as Renee Yandow. 20 years of service. We'd like to congratulate Tiffany Brusacchio, who is not here tonight, but has 20 years. So, a round of applause. And 30 years of service. Congratulations goes out to Julie Knapp.
Thank you. Next, could Mr. Nelson, please, come up from Harris Hill?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to congratulate our tenure recommendations. Come on down, school counselor, Kristen Brolzma. The current fourth grade teacher, Katie Hybe. Special education, Shelby Spawnholz. First, I would like to acknowledge Pam Facklum. For 20 years, she can't be here tonight. A music teacher extraordinaire. I can't believe these names, because it feels like yesterday. 15 years, Laura Swanson, third grade. Currently working in our library, 20 years. This is amazing, Bridgette Bounds. This one's hard, because 25 years and 13, she's been right by my side. My current secretary, Terry Cox, 25 years. And 30 years. She started when she was 10 years old, Veronica Gambi. It's the accelerated program. It's accelerated. Congratulations.
I was a baby. Congratulations.
Thank you. Could I invite Mrs. Marcy Ware from Indian Landing, please? Could I invite Mrs. Marcy Ware from Indian Landing, please?
Good evening. Tonight, it's my pleasure to give tenure recognition to six teachers, our staff members, from Indian Landing. First is 4th grade, soon-to-be 2nd grade teacher, Brian Belash.
I said, "Do we have to hug?"
Excuse me. He started off as a 4th grade teacher, now teaches 5th grade, Jeremy Halbert. He's got some fans in the audience. And Jeremy's wife is expecting a baby any minute now, so I know he's, or any day now. Speaking of babies, congratulations to special education teacher Abby Jones, who will be expecting her own baby this summer. Our school psychologist, Emily Meisch. There you go. 3rd grade teacher Jessie Nima. And 1st grade teacher Elsa Wheat. And we have two teachers here with us this evening. The first is celebrating 20 years, Erin Wade. Erin is a special education teacher and our math RTI coordinator. And also here with us this evening, celebrating 25 years, is 1st grade teacher Colleen Callahan. And we had three others reaching milestones. Jill Ryan, our computer lab TA, is 15 years. Julie Harney, celebrating 20 years as a teaching assistant. And Ms. Amy Comanzo, 25 years. She's a current kindergarten teacher. So congratulations to all of the Indian Landing staff.
Could I ask Dr. Maloney, please, to join me? Could you keep moving down a little bit more? A little bit more. A little bit more. Keep going. Keep going. It did. You got it? Okay, thank you.
So when I looked at the list of teachers who are receiving tenure tonight, it felt like, I couldn't believe that they were untenured. It felt like they've been a part of Team PHS forever. So I'm very excited to congratulate Julie Garone from Spanish. Congratulations, Julie. Drew McMillan from English. Doug Schneider from Science. Adam Sweeney, also from Science. And then one of our assistant principals, Terry Marsh. And then, being the high school, we have a nice, long list for 15 years, starting with Steph Dana from the counseling department. Terry Febrry, one of our assistant principals. Congratulations, Terry. Terry Finnlayson from the health department. The PHS health department, not the Monroe County Health Department. Brandon Fox, also from the counseling department. Kristy Giancurcio from the math department. Congratulations, Kristy. Deb Horowitz, also from the math department. Congratulations, Deb. And also from the math department, Colleen Parkers. And then Rob Young from PE. I don't, I didn't see Pat either. And then for 25 years, and this all isn't at PHS because I know he's been in some other And then I don't believe she's here, but also for 25 years, Luisa Lombardozzi.
I don't think so. Mr. Herschler, where are you? Come on down. Mr. Scott Herschler from Scribner Road.
Good evening again. It is my privilege to honor the following Scribner staff and friends. First off, receiving tenure tonight and shared between Scribner and Harris Hill, Mr. Jeremy And now years of service, 15 years, first up kindergarten teacher Sherri Frederick. And security hall monitor, 15 years also, Donna Harrington. And security hall monitor, 15 years also, Donna Harrington. Next up, literacy specialist, Kim Walzik. And paraprofessional, 15 years, Mr. Richard Lapp. Now the 20-years, music vocalist, Tanya Fletcher. 1st grade teacher, Roxanne Spogen. And could not be here tonight, but our school counselor, Meg Madison, also 20 years. Last but not least, at the quarter-century mark, 25, Joanne Howard, 2nd grade.
Next, we have Dr. Sansoussi, who will be recognizing transportation and district office.
Thank you very much. Tonight here, for 15 years from transportation but not able to be here tonight, are Mario Feravanti and Joan Gilman. Ray Hart has 20 years tonight. Ray or, I don't, okay, Ray Hart, from the district office, but thank you very much. Here tonight with, celebrating 20 years with the district office, is Marty Morrow. And not able to be here tonight, but with 15 years from the district office, Tom Ebert and Lil Shore. So thank you.
And now Dr. Putnam with some recognitions.
So I have one tenure recognition and a 20-year mark, and so just for our tenure recognition, I'll say I really thought that I left big shoes to fill at the high school, and this individual got more hugs than I've ever gotten, so congratulations to Dr. Maloney Yes, and then, this one is amazing, too. I didn't realize, I looked at it, that prior to my work as superintendent, we hired 10-year-olds as principals, and so for 20 years, Mr. Mark Nelson. Congratulations, Mark.
And last but not least, Mr. Pfeifer.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to share with you this evening tenure recommendations for two administrative members of the Office of Instruction team. First, Director of Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services, Mr. Scott Dreschler. We're going to take a short break and let our honorees return to home with their families and enjoy the rest of the evening, and then the board will probably take a quick break and return to their seats and go on with the meeting. So, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening, and thank you to everyone for all their service.
All right. Call the meeting back to order at 7:57 PM.
So we are continuing our recognitions this evening, and I'll just start by reading this slide, which is a thank you to Carol for 15 years of countless hours and outstanding service as a board member. And I'm going to turn it over to our president, Catherine Dean, for a few words, and then, because you do know I like to talk, I may have a couple as well.
So Carol, on behalf of the board, we would like to thank you for all of your years of service. Well, when I came on the board, Carol was president, and she welcomed me, and you were a good leader, and I appreciated that. But I did want to make note of some of your accomplishments. We noticed your whole-student centered, your dedication to the whole student, and your dedication to your role as a board member, in your role as a member, in your role as president, in your role as past president, and we appreciate all of that. They're different roles, there are different activities, different insights, and I feel like you've always handled those different positions with such professionalism and dedication to our mission for the whole student. You rose to many challenges in each one of those roles, and what's very unique about you, about Carol, is the length of service and what that brings to the board, which we will miss. And what Tom has told me is called industrial...
Historical leadership.
Historical leadership of the industry. Okay, whatever it's called. It has something to do with, you understand how we roll and how we operate. And, you know, we can always go to Carol and say, "Wait a minute, didn't something happen? Wait, back then," and you always know, and you know what superintendent it was under, and you know what policy, and did I say policy? Because that has been one of your great strengths, is your contributions to our policy committee. So the board will not be the same without you, but we're very happy that you're leaving at the time that you wanted to leave, and so that makes it nice for what it is.
We have some family member flowers as well. I think we can break all protocol for Mr. Nazra, Dr. Nazra, yes.
I just want to say, we have three daughters going through Penfield schools, and we're proud of Carol for being the last one to graduate.
So you think you're dumb, but I do have a couple of words. So Carol was actually the first board member I ever met when I came to Penfield Central Schools, and it's because, as an assistant principal, I confiscated one of her daughter's cell phones when we had a different cellphone policy that students weren't allowed to have them. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of myself and the district, just your support and your leadership. You've been a champion for mental health, social-emotional learning, and the development of the whole student from the time you've been on the board. And that focus has really developed into some of our major overarching goals in the work we do. I love... I love quotes, you might know that, and so I will paraphrase and destroy one, but I will tell you that I, when I think about Carol, I think that of a quote my father told me once that I've used in some things I've done, which is, "A leader is a lot like a ship captain. He's not judged by calm waters, but how they navigate stormy seas." And you have been through lots of capital projects, failed capital projects, issues within the Penfield community, the math wars, just about everything in Penfield, and so losing you for much better retirement, wonderful things with your family will be a loss, but we all know your cellphone, so you know you can't run too far from this Board. So thank you, Carol, very much, and I have a gift on behalf of the District for you. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you have a few words, you're more than welcome to share.
If I could, Doctor...
Oh, I'm sorry, John, yes.
Doctor, I'm over here.
Oh, where are you? This setup is so different.
You didn't think you'd get away without me saying something, did you? You know, we served three-years as Officers, and going into it, it was not the greatest of times, but coming out, this is what we have, so that I have to be appreciated, to be with you during those times. Also, in my role as past President Monroe County School Boards Association, I have something for you, and it says, "In grateful appreciation for your service as a Board of Education Member, 2018, June 2018, Monroe County School Boards Association," and with it is a little bookmark, and I think this is appropriate, because the front side says "Inspire," which you did, and then the backside says "Have Fun," so, on behalf of the Monroe County School Boards Association.
I'll try to say a few words. It's been 15-years, but they've gone by so fast. It was just so quick, and this District has really made it worth it. The trust that the community had in our Board, in each one of us, you know, the ones that were passed, and the ones that are still here, and the ones that are coming, you know, I think that is amazing. This community is, has a lot to offer to its schools, and I hope that people will always be supportive of it, and I think this is what just always was fueling my passion for everything that I was doing. On Mark Nelson's interview committee, I couldn't believe 20-years, Mark, you know, so, before even he was a Principal. I wanna thank all of you, the teachers, faculty, community members, especially the parents, but administrators, newer superintendents, Board Members, for everything. You've helped me, you know, do every single time to try to be a better Board Member, and I could have never done it without you guys, my husband and my three girls, so, thank you. And I know Katja's here representing all three of them, the other two are travelers, so, you know, but you were the ones who just always made me go forward, so, thank you for everything, it's just been beautiful.
I think we should just sit here and stare at Carol, because I know she enjoys it. But as a trooper, we'll get through the rest of our last official meeting with Carol on the Board, and you will be missed. I'll turn a little bit to a welcome, so I'll, we'll turn it over to our President Catherine Dean.
So, one of the things when you're in the middle of a book, you go through the chapters, and when you finish one, you start another, and this is a poignant moment, but we wanna welcome you, Bill, we're really happy to have you, we look forward to working with you, and you can see, you've got a big shoe to fill. But we're all here to help you, and we'll, you know, we'll make it so it's not as daunting as you think it is right now, everything is gonna be fine. We look forward to it, and thank you for being willing to serve the community, and welcome aboard.
So, Bill, on behalf of the District, we do have a gift that Board Members get when they're sworn in, and because you decided to spend a very warm evening in the cafeteria with us, we're gonna give this to you now. I just wanna say, you know, I've been in the District since 2008, four-years with this Board, and they really are how they appear, they're willing to support each other, willing to support outside ideas, work together as a team, and I just really look forward to getting to know you, and bringing you on, on behalf of the District, to be a great team player. And so we've got a Penfield Board of Education fancy bag, and there's a binder in there as well, so thank you. So Bill does happen to be a teacher in another District, and I made him promise he'd carry his Penfield bag everywhere he goes. It's all about, it's all about making our sure names out there. I'll turn as well to another person who's leaving us, for Greener Pastures of California, our Student Representative, Claire, and I'll turn it over to, again, our Board President, Mrs. Dean.
Claire, we've had just a wonderful time having you be part of our Board Meetings, and we very much appreciate all of the time and effort you put into your reports, they were very thorough, you upstaged Dr. Putnam a lot, and we just really got a kick out of that. But they were very thoughtful, and you could tell, you put a lot of, you took this role very seriously, and we appreciate that, because we really enjoy the student perspective and seeing the ups and the downs of the student life, and because that's why we're all here. So we thank you very much for everything that you've done, we will miss you, but we're really excited for you to move on to college in California, and we hope that when you get settled in your new life, you always keep us in your heart, because we'll never forget you. So on behalf of the District and the Board, we have a little something for you in Thanksgiving of all of your service.
So Claire, unlike Board Members when they leave, you still have to make sure you graduate from high school, so you've got a little more than a week, and then we'll see you at RIT onstage, all the Board Members will be there. And just, in closing, I would just say, Claire, Mrs. Dean mentioned it, but I do get a kick out of the fact that your K-12 presentations of what's happening from kindergarten to 12th grade really opened the doors, I think, to the Board and the community to hear all the great things that are happening, and I know I say it every time, and I'll say it tonight, I'm sure as well, is that your presentations are better than mine, so I'm, it's a little happy that you're leaving, because you really were showing me up, and I'm worried that you're gonna take my job. So, I have really, it's been a pleasure to get to know you as you've been on the Board, and thank you so much. And I'd like to take a minute, if it's okay, to introduce, so the Boards aware and for the community, we have Levia Zhao, did I say it, did I get it? All right, so Levia is gonna be our new Student Rep, starting next school year, but she came here tonight to see how it works, and I did tell her, it's not always so big at all of our Board Meetings, but you've got big shoes to fill, I'm sure you'll do a great job, so if we can welcome our new Student Rep as well. And this is where I get to say, and that concludes our special reports.
That was quite an, quite an event. All right, so, okay, we are at visitor speaking time, I see Mr. Palladori, you wish to speak tonight, goodnight, everybody, thank you for staying. Mr. Palladori, you know our procedures and whatnot, I would just ask you to remember about the time, and if you'd like to go up to the podium?
A little different this evening, you'll be at the podium in the cafeteria.
Nothing really clears out a Board Meeting like Board Business, huh? This is gonna be short this evening, I wanna just give an update on some additional information. This isn't new to the Members of the Board, but for those who don't know, my discussion is always on school safety, specifically focused on protecting our children in light of more of the recent difficult incidences that we're facing, specifically looking to try and get school resource officers at every school. So, over the last two weeks, I've spoken with Wheatland Chailey Superintendent and Deb Lay and the Director of Safety at BOSI's in Fairport, Jim Colt, continually spoken with the Sheriff's Office, and it seems like they've both implemented these programs in the last three to four years, and after lots of discussions, I'm gonna summarize findings. It seems like this process is not a very complicated one, it's provided great benefits to the schools that surpass just the safety element, really building a foundation of relationship and trust, and positive messages to the kids, so they get to see a different paradigm with law enforcement. Life skills for students and parents alike, and it also aligns with the focus of mental health and better preparedness for students and faculty, and the list of benefits kept going on and on, and they implemented this not necessarily for strict school safety like I believe I'm doing reactively, they did it for the benefits that I just mentioned, but they're glad that they have it, but it seems to have tremendous benefits. Three days after the last Board Meeting, we saw another incident that was very unfortunate, and I find that, I do not believe that this is gonna be, especially if you've seen some of the videos, which are troubling, this is being done for notoriety and for fame, and we really need to make sure that, if people are like that out there, we need to find ways to protect our most valuable resource. So, the last Board Meeting, there was a safety report, I'm in the process of responding to that report, and mostly what I will do is just submit that, and I've given you a summary of what I believe we've needed over the past couple of months, but you'll see the detail in that report. So, this was a very wonderful engagement tonight, unfortunately, I have something else I have to do that I'm now late for, but this was really great, and it was a nice surprise, but I look forward to submitting that and talking to you more in the future, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Claire.
So, my last report's gonna be pretty long, but it's okay, I'll stay here as long as I can. At Harris Hill, students learned about cultures around the world at Harris Hill's multicultural fair, which included food, music, and crafts, and Harris Hill and Scribner Penpals met face-to-face after sharing their writing all year, creating a bridge between the Penfield Schools. And students celebrated reading at Camp Read-A-Lot, where students enjoyed their favorite books under tents and blankets, and 5th graders celebrated their last year in elementary school at the carnival-themed 5th-grade bash and at their annual trip to Camp Arrowhead. At Cobles, 3rd grade students learned about global trade and child labor from PHS students, and string students exemplified their musical growth over the year at the annual Cobles Spring String Fling. At Indian Landing, 3rd graders performed at their International Fair, where they showed their new knowledge in communities around the world and how they, as students, have a role as global citizens, and 5th graders presented their Western Hemisphere and country research projects to families and friends. 4th graders experienced what it was like to immigrate to the United States through Ellis Island at Indian Landing's Annual Immigration Day, and Indian Landing Chorus performed the National Anthem at the June 8th Red Wings Game. At Scribner, 5th graders and their kindergarten buddies celebrated their great year together of relationship-building and growing, and Scribner is winding down the year with fun activities such as spelling bees, trivia's, outdoor fun days, and field trips to Camp Selmaris. At Bay Trail, 8th graders experienced their nation's history through the notorious Washington, DC trip, and deputies visited Bay Trail to help caring community ambassadors understand social media. 8th graders celebrated the end of the year at the annual 8th-grade formal dance. At the high school, PHS hosted the annual Penfield Buddy Olympics, where volunteers and participants from all schools around the District came together, and girls and boys varsity lacrosse teams both became sectional champions, with the girls' team winning their way into the New York State Finals. High school art and technology students exemplified Penfield's innovation at PHS's annual steam fair, and seniors celebrated the end of high school by staying up late at their Hollywood-themed senior bash at the East Side YMCA. Students were awarded for the academic accomplishments at the Honors Convocation, and yesterday, seniors traveled to their respective elementary schools in their caps and gowns at the Caps and Gowns Parades. And I just wanted to say thank you to every single member on the Board for being so supportive and understanding, and, yeah, this experience on the Board was probably one of the greatest opportunities I had in high school, and I'm just so proud and grateful to be able to go to a District that gives students like a voice in administration, and even though many schools around the Districts also have student representatives on their school boards, I'm just so grateful that I was able to like experience this and just have this amazing opportunity, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
And I know Levia, she's one of my really good friends, so I know you guys are all in good hands, and she's also in really good hands, and she's gonna do just as great, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. And then Levia, I hope you know what to see, what you have to follow.
All right, Superintendents Reports.
So you really did decide to really show me up, because I don't have anything that, mine's short, so, nice job, very, very well done, Claire. This evening for Superintendent Reports, I do have just a few staff and student honors, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansoussi for our bus inspection report, which is actually very exciting, and our reserve funding and analysis of fund balance, again with Dr. Sansoussi. NHS Spring Induction every year, and this year, congratulations to the many students who were inducted into the PHS Chapter of the National Honor Society at the Spring Induction Ceremony, wonderful photo, I won't read all their names, but they are in the agenda, we're very proud of our students. Also, continuing that pride with our students, our Scholar-Athlete Teams, and so, these teams listed to be considered a Scholar-Athlete Team, 75% of the participants on the team must have an average of 90% or higher, and so, I'm always impressed when we take a look at such a long list of baseball, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, boys tennis, girls outdoor track, boys outdoor track, and softball, our Scholar-Athlete Teams per New York State. And last but not least for my report, is our Business First Rankings, I will just say before I read this, is that I am a believer, and as I continue in this role, I'm more and more convinced that test scores are only one way to rank a school district, and magazines and national publications don't dig deep into all of the amazing things we do, Claire mentioned some of them, in terms of giving students a voice, and being part of a community, and really feeling love and compassion for your school. But we do know that people who buy homes do wanna look at ranked schools, and so we're also proud that, once again, Business First Rankings, for the sixth year in a row, Cobles Elementary School has been named the number-one in academic performance out of 162 elementary schools in Rochester by Business First Magazine, also top schools, Scribner 4th, Harris Hill 9th, and Indian Landing 12th, again, out of 162 elementary schools. Bay Trail was ranked 3rd out of middle schools, out of 97 middle schools, Bay Trail was 3rd, and PHS was ranked 4th out of 86 area high schools, two of those happen to be in the same District, so I consider PHS to be 3rd, but that's just how I look, because I'm a little biased around how wonderful Penfield is. So again, congratulations to all of our incredible staff and families and communities to make those academic performance rankings. And now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansoussi about the bus inspection report.
Thank you. As you said, this is exciting.
It is.
A smaller celebration than the ones we've had previously tonight, but celebration nonetheless. So, the Department of Transportation keeps track of school Districts' bus inspections, so all of our buses are inspected twice per year by the Department of Transportation. It's a very rigorous inspection, and it's intended to ensure that our buses are safe for the transportation of our kids. Their goal is that a school District or a public carrier such as us should have a 90% passing rate. Carriers similar to us, other school Districts on average have about a, have on average a 95.2% passing rate. So, we just received our report for last year, for the year 2017-18, with 145 inspections, we had a 90- a 97.9% passing rate. So, we certainly surpassed the DOT's goal. We rank above our peers and other similar carriers, and that really puts us amongst the best in terms of that passing rate statewide. So, I think it's worthy of a moment's thanks for the folks who work so hard to make that happen. Our mechanics at the bus grudge are doing a fine, fine job of keeping up with that important work.
I told you it was exciting, because that's, I mean, that's like a, that's a highly effective score if it was on APPR, so.
That's very impressive.
And I'll, Dr. Sansucci, you can continue.
So, now we'll move on to other exciting stuff. So, numbers are always exciting. So, we're coming towards the end of the school year, and so, at this point in the year, we begin a process that'll continue through August and potentially into the remainder of the school year, and that's a look at where we finish the year in terms of our operations. So, we began this process way back, really in December, when we took a look at our reserves, our reserve plan, our reserve balances, looked back at the history of where we'd been, and started to look forward and make some projections. We continued that process throughout the course of the year, and as part of our budget adoption, you'll recall, new this year was we adopted as part of the budget adoption, the Property Tax Report card that included another review of reserves and of our planning for it. So, with all that planning, sooner or later, you have to do something, and tonight begins that process. So, I won't go through this slide in detail. Essentially, what this does is for our general fund operations, so for the majority of our school funding, it takes a look at where we began, how much revenue we brought in. So, revenues into the school district in all forms, carryover encumbrances, draws from reserves, so money we took out of reserves and used to support our operations, and then how much we spent. So, what we had, what we got, and what we spent. And then, the question at the end of the slide is, what shall we do next? So, there's a number of reserves, or there's a number of recommendations contained in your agenda item tonight, but these next slides will summarize it. So, we end the year with essentially enough money to retain our assigned, to certainly fund the assigned fund balance for reduction of taxes, and to maintain the 4% unreserved fund balance. The recommendation in your packet is always that we, those are the first spot that we would turn to to make sure that our planning is adequate for future years and that we're adequately funded. We need to adjust our employee benefits accrued liability reserve. That's a small reserve that puts aside money for a particular unit that has an end of, when employees reach the end of their career in Penfield and retire, they're entitled to a benefit in retirement, and we reserve some money against that. It's only about $80,000, but it needs to be adjusted every year. So, we would do that. Our plan has been to fully fund our reserve for buses. We'll begin implementing revised plan next year, I believe. We'll revisit that as we move through planning, but we'll be increasing, I think, in the course of the next several years, our draws from reserves. So, we want to finish funding that plan. That was also included in our bus reserve plan submitted along with the budget. We would continue to fund capital reserves, transfer about $474,000 to tax certiori. So, currently, our tax certiori reserve moves up and down. We've spent money out of it over the course of this year. In past years, we've drawn it down when it's, when cases have settled and gotten, and it's gotten, and the funding has been adequate or even too much. At this point, we're behind. $474,000 would bring the reserve up to a 75% funding level, which is, I think, about where we would want to be. That, we'll revisit that in August again, because I don't typically get, I won't get tax certiori claims for the new year until late July. So, I expect our need for that to go up, but we'll just need to dipstick it at that point, make a determination as to what we want to do and make any adjustments at that August meeting. This is because of the moving target nature, this a three-step process. We take a look at it tonight before the end of the school year. We haven't closed the books yet. We haven't had our audit yet. So, that process will occur over the course of the summer. In August, as part of the establishment of the tax levy and the tax rate, we take another look at our plan, make a determination at that point if any changes are necessary. If they are, we can make them at that point. And then, as we finally close books, and as everything gets done really into September, if there's any significant deviation from that plan, I would come back to the Board and report that. So, that's what really those last two bullets of this slide have to do with, is after closing, if there were any adjustments, we're just declaring now that we would make those adjustments against the Capital Reserve. And then, finally, that, you know, this is, that moving target, we will be back and have further discussion at the August meeting. So, there's lots more detail in the agenda item, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
That concludes Superintendent Reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
You're welcome.
All right, Board members, we're on page 3, under Board Business. Facilities. Channing Philbrick Park Sewage Treatment Building Resolution. In 2014, the Town of Penfield and the district entered into an agreement authorizing school use of the former sewer plant in Channing Philbrick Park. The use of this facility has greatly benefited the district, easing congestion at the B&amp;G and transportation facility, as well as providing a central location for various materials that can be organized for efficiency of usage. The original lease has expired. The proposed renewal is on the same terms as the original agreement, with the exception of the term of the agreement. The lease does not call for any rent. The school is responsible for utilities associated with our usage of electric, gas, and water. The proposed term of the new agreement is for three years, followed by automatic two-year renewals. Either party may terminate the lease by providing 90 days' advance notice. This is a concrete example of the improving and evolving partnership between the school and the town. This arrangement has improved our efficiency while making use of a publicly-owned facility that would otherwise not be fully utilized. Approval of the lease is recommended. Result. The Superintendent of Schools is authorized to negotiate final terms and conditions and to enter into a lease with the Town of Penfield for use of the facilities in Channing Philbrick Park as described above. May I have a motion in a second?
Sure.
Any questions or comments? John?
Yeah, wanted to make note, based on my question, you know, the cost, there's no cost, but the response was that we pay the utilities. It does say in Article 6 that the landlord will pay utilities. I don't know if that's something that we have to be concerned of here if we're voting on it, or...
It's the same lease, I believe. I can double-check. The landlord would pay the lease, but I believe we've been reimbursing for our program.
Okay, all right. All right, just want to make this, or have to revisit this, I guess, in the future.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Mark, I have a quick question. When it says it's automatic renewal, does that just mean it goes on and on? Okay, you don't have to make a call or write anything?
Right, exactly. It was just, essentially, the idea here was that we had sort of initial three-year term, and then it would just continue in force until one of us decided that it was time to be done.
Right.
And then, for that to happen, there's a 90-day window for notice to be given. You know, that's sort of the formality of the lease arrangement. I think the nature of our, the nature of our relationship with the town is such that we would just talk about it and figure it out. So...
Yeah, okay.
But, the lease itself calls for a three-year term, so we would be guaranteed three years, and then subsequent two-year renewals with that 90-day right for either party to bail out.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, we're gonna cover the reserve funding and analysis of fund balance as Mark has described, and we'll move to page 7. So, after number 7, as presented by Mark and following past Board of Education guidelines and practices, and recognizing the directive of prior board resolutions and voter actions, it is recommended that 4% be retained as unreserved fund balance for impact on future budgets. Further, $2,071,599 has been designated to reduce taxes in 2018-2019 as described in the budget materials. As additional information is received and as closing entries are made, adjustments, if any, will be applied to Capital Reserve. May I have a motion and a second for the following. $2,071,599 is to be assigned fund balance for reduction of taxes. $3,927,331 is to be retained as unassigned fund balance. $4,159,752 to fund the 2016 Capital Reserve. $2,235,296 to fund the 2017 School Bus Reserve Fund. $474,798 to fund Tax Certiori Reserve. The EBLR Reserve will be adjusted to reflect the actual value of outstanding sick days as of June 30, 2018. All remaining available funds are to be transferred to the 2016 Capital Reserve. May I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. BOSI's Transportation Contract for the 2018-19 School Year. Contracts in the amount of $769,504.50. School year transportation, including disabled vocational and shuttle transportation, and $3,500 for after-school field trips, were received from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services for transportation provided Penfield students for the 2018-19 school year. If the Board approves, the following motion is in order. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorize the signature of the President to the contracts in the amounts of $769,504.50 and $3,500 from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services covering transportation provided Penfield students for the 2018-19 school year. The dollar amount is an approximation. The district will be billed for the actual number of students transported and aids used. Motion in a second, please.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. BOSI's Initial Contract for Services for the 2018-19 School Year. A contract in the amount of $9,157,361.41 has been received from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services covering services to be provided Penfield students for the 2018-19 school year. If the Board approves, the following motion is in order. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorize the signature of the President to the contract in the amount of $9,157,361.41 from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services covering services to be provided Penfield students for the 2018-19 school year, and payment of the subsequent invoices for services according to the schedule of 10 times per year plus additional supplemental billings as needed. The Superintendent of Schools is also authorized to amend the contract from time to time as additional services are requested or dropped. Motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Bond Resolution. The agenda item is, this agenda item is a bond resolution for the Elementary Editions Project, which was approved by the voters on May 15, 2018. This resolution confirms the Board's previous actions regarding the State Environmental Quality Act, the Quality Review Act, authorizes the issuance of up to $15,588,000 in bonds and bond anticipation notes, and pledges the full faith and credit of the school district to the repayment of the bonds. Additionally, there are other legal requirements associated with the issuance of the proposed bonds that are contained in the agenda. The resolution will be published in the official newspapers of the district. The validity of the bonds must be contested within 20 days of the date of their publication. The resolution, excuse me, the resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption. Duly put to vote as follows. Please go to page 11. Mrs. Fabiars? Mrs. Benati-Chizzi? Mrs. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Elidge?
Aye.
Mrs. Nasra?
Aye.
Mr. Otney?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Seven, four, and none opposed. Didn't read any of that. No, I did the, okay, yeah. All right, so here we are. Motion passed, yep. Okay, thank you. Approval of Agreement with Financial Advisor. This district annually appoints the firm of Bernard P. Donigan, Inc., for the purpose of financial consulting services. BPD, Inc. provides assistance and financial consulting services for new and existing capital projects and other financial matters. These services include official statements and other documentation for bond anticipation notes and serial bonds, sale of serial bonds, continuing disclosure statements during the life of the borrowing, IRS arbitrage, rebate, or penalty tracking and compliance, financial management services. BPD, Inc. has provided a proposal dated May 16, 2018 detailing their services and fees. This letter has been provided to the Board. Approval is recommended. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorize the Superintendent to enter into a contract as described above with Bernard P. Donigan for the purpose of financial consulting services?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Contract with Children's Institute, Inc. The district is contracting with Children's Institute, Inc., to provide a whole child health needs assessment, assistance with the development of a district-wide health promotion implementation plan, presentation and dissemination of the plan, and staff training. The contract is not to exceed $54,950 and will be paid through Greater Register Health Foundation grant funding. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorize the Superintendent of Schools to enter into a contract with Children's Institute, Inc.? Questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Donations. Donations totaling $306.62 for items in the 2017-18 budget were received by the district's schools as shown. Cobles Elementary PTA Arts and Education, $306.62. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $306.62 to the 2017-18 budget as shown above. The amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield schools.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Professional Development Plan of Approval. May I have a motion and a second that the Professional Development Plan be approved as presented on May 22, 2018 for the 2018-19 school year? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Textbook Approval. This is for the Super Kids Reading Program, and we had the, well, I'll just read it. Motion in a sec, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the above-recommended textbook as presented on May 22, 2018?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, Policy Review. Dr. Putnam?
All right. So, Policy Review, we have a number of policies that are under our second reading and up for approval. So, just a quick review. Policy 3140 is Display of the Flag, no changes since the first read. 3272 Commercial Activities, no changes since the first read. 3410, which is the District Code of Conduct on School Property and at School Functions, we reviewed comments and made a slight change, the Policy Committee did, expanding the descriptions around illegal substances. We added vaping is the biggest piece in that we don't want to allow that. District Wellness, 5010, there were no changes since the first read. And just an update that in first read, the Meal Charging and Prohibition Against Meal Shaming, which is
Shaming, which is a law that we do need to have policy mirror, the new law, we originally listed that as policy number 5660, and that was in error. So the actual policy number is 5661, and that will replace our current 5661 and our current 5661 Regulation 1. And policy 5660 remains as is and unchanged. It was just a change in the policy number, it was just a mistake. So that's, but no changes were made since the first read. 8251 Therapy Dogs in Schools, we reviewed feedback from both staff and board members, and teaching staff, and feedback was reviewed. There were some changes made, including notifying, notifying staff if there were to be a therapy dog in a school, not just parents, but also notifying staff, adding accreditation to the minimum standards listed, and also adding a brief description of therapy reading dogs, which is a program that our elementary schools use in our middle school, where they bring in an organization that has therapy dogs as students read to for about an hour, a couple times a month, it depends on what school, how many times. So, those therapy dogs, because they come from a program, will not have to go through the rigorous standard of veterinary checks, because they already are done by the outside group. They won't be approved by the board, they'll be approved by the building principal like they currently have. We didn't want to, it was a great feedback from some board members and from teachers who were worried that this new policy would, would have a negative impact on therapy reading dogs. So, we made those changes, although there are no changes to policy 8251 Regulation or 8251 Form, those stayed the same.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion and a second that the above policies be approved as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Carol?
I'm really gonna miss policy.
I was gonna say, of course you have a comment about policy. We're gonna miss you on the committee, too.
Absolutely.
All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Approval of Policy 6110, Code of Ethics for All Board Members and All District Personnel. May I have a motion?
Can I just mention that one?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just, especially for the community. Typically, we do a first read of the policy, allow feedback, and then do a second read and approval. We do have, every once in a while, this takes place where the law changed, and New York State Ed requires us to have this policy in place by July 1st, and of course, New York State Ed didn't give us a whole lot of time to do that, and based on board meetings, we don't have another board meeting until into July. And so this Code of Ethics for All Board Members is a policy we already have, we just added paragraph L, which is regarding the federally funded purchasing, which is a new federal requirement and must be adopted and in place by July 1st. So it, so we can comment on it, but it's a legal piece that we need to add to our policy, which was in your packet.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, may I have a motion and a second that the above policy be approved as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Carol? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. I don't have any remarks or presentations, we kind of went through it all, didn't we? We did, we did a lot. No one finished business? Any comments under new business?
Graduation.
Yeah, oh, that's right, graduation, I know, kind of, I can't believe it. If it weren't for the weather, I wouldn't believe it.
I, I just, you know, as a reminder, because it started with the board, but red shoes are a requirement for board members and superintendents, I believe, and anybody else who'd like to have red shoes. So, Bill, you have a year, but red shoes.
Red shoes.
To show that Penfield pride.
I'll give Bill my hands.
You can have Carol's red shoes, sorry. All right.
All right, no new business other than that, and there being no further business, may I have a motion and a second that Carol's last meeting and this meeting be adjourned at 8:46 PM?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you.
Wow.